Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. Item number one is called the order. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. I'd now like to invite everyone who is able and willing to stand to join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next up, we have item number four, meeting minutes. Tonight, I'm going to be assisted by Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Garland.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start off with reading the Native American, our land acknowledgement for the city of Tempe. We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this land since time immemorial. These ancestral lands of the Aatham, known as the Pima, and Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Aatham and the Salt River, Pima, Maricopa Indian community and the Hila River Indian community. We accept those responsibilities of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action. Then, Mayor, item 4A, we have no meeting minutes, so skip to 4B.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to accept the board and commission meeting minutes from 4B1 to 4B7.
It's been moved by Councilmember Garland. It was seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes seven to zero. Next up is item number five, reports and announcements. I have three, actually four technically. I'd like to see if the council will be willing to join me down at the front. Okay, the first proclamation, I would like to invite Chef Tracy Dempsey to come join me. So, just a very, very brief story about this. I moved to Arizona back in June of 2003, and one of the things, people know that I'm a major foodie, and I like to go to restaurants all over the city of Tempe and all throughout the greater Phoenix area. And one of the things I found going to a lot of these great restaurants when I started getting into the restaurant scene was, I would get to the end of the meal, and every time I got to the end, I would see this thing on the menu that said, "Desserts provided by Tracy Dempsey Originals." And I was like, who is this magical mythical person, Tracy Dempsey, who's preparing all of these incredible desserts for all of these top-flight restaurants throughout the valley? These folks were actually for going, doing their own desserts in restaurants because of how phenomenal all of the sweet treats that Tracy had were. And honestly, they're still, to this day, absolutely incredible. Every time I go by her shop, I probably can't leave for anything less than $50. I'm not the only one, because I see folks coming in after me, grabbing everything from CSA boxes to monthly wine subscriptions to all the other sweet and savory treats in her shop, and she's right over on University. So if you haven't had a chance to get over there, please make sure to make the trip. I also wanted to thank my good friend Barb Harris for helping me kind of come up with a very clever ruse about how I was able to deliver this news. It was thanks to her being the amazing PR consultant that she is. She was the one who concocted the story and got me into the shop, so I wanted to thank you for helping me with all the setup of this. But Barb and Chef Dempsey have been friends for quite some time, and so I really appreciate her being here to support. And I just wanted to say, so I wanted to let Chef Dempsey know that we wanted to declare today as her day for the incredible work that she has done in this community. So I will go ahead and read the proclamation. For more than 20 years, Valley diners have enjoyed treats by pastry chef Tracy Dempsey at fine restaurants around the area. And whereas Tracy Dempsey brought her bakery business, Tracy Dempsey Originals, to Tempe in 2012, and opened her retail shop in 2017. And whereas Tracy Dempsey supports a myriad of local small businesses by selling their products in her shop, Tracy Dempsey Originals and O D V wines. And whereas Tracy Dempsey supports a variety of local causes that help make our community a better place to be, such as volunteering as a chef mentor with the Blue Watermelon Project, hosting weekly CSA pickups for sun produce co-op working with local Arizona farmers and growers to bring in the freshest in-season produce to its members, supporting the joy bus, and being active with Arizona Women in Food. And whereas the city of Tempe is thankful to Tracy Dempsey for her involvement in the Tempe community and for being a great resource for other local small businesses. Now therefore, I, Corey D. Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare March 16, 2023, as, declare Tracy Dempsey, a Tempe treasure in Tempe, Arizona. Okay, so the next proclamation here I have is for Zuhair Mahmoud Khatib. If the family and people who are here would love to join me up front as I read this as well, I would love to have them. So just as another note, one of the founders of Haji Baba, one of the local institutions here in the Tempe community, a place where frankly, people, and they know this, they probably see me at least once a week. I am regularly in the restaurant because the food is absolutely incredible, and what they bring to our community is just absolutely tremendous. We unfortunately lost a very great man recently who started this incredible business and this incredible institution within our city, and I wanted to make sure that we all honored him with a proclamation here this evening. So this one reads, whereas Zuhair Mahmoud Khatib moved to Arizona from Syria at a young age, where he began his journey seeking a better life, opportunities, and dreaming to build a happy family. And whereas Zuhair is an alumni of Arizona State University, where after graduating, he began a small printing business with a college friend, David. And whereas although he had a passion for electrical engineering and fixing electronics, he also found interest years later in the food industry. At age 33, he opened Haji Baba, a Mediterranean restaurant and grocery store in Tempe with his friend Nabil. And whereas with their partnership, Haji Baba has won over 21 awards throughout the years, including the Best Middle Eastern Deli, the Best Middle Eastern Food and Restaurant, the Best Middle Eastern Grocer, the Best Food Market Award, and Annual Critics' Choice winner by AZ Central, a certificate of appreciation from Al Muhammadi for supporting the organization for more than five years, and many more. And whereas Zuhair has always been a pleasant and helpful individual, he was known for actively seeking opportunities to contribute to many charity events. He has demonstrated his compassion for countless students, orphans, and charities by funding their education or needs. And whereas he was family-oriented, and his favorite things to do were spending time with his family, enjoying nature, going sightseeing at the ocean, animals, and photography. He also enjoyed barbecuing at picnics and dining out with the people he loved. He was also known for making delicious baklava pastries fresh every day at the restaurant. He taught his children to always be humble, respect and help the elderly, be patient, and help people without expecting anything in return, and the world will reward you for it. He taught us to trust in God and trust in his plan and path for us. He taught us to be thankful for the blessings we have in front of us. And whereas Zuhair Mahmoud Khatib was a loving, caring, generous, funny, and passionate father of four boys and was happily married for 38 years, he has left a significant mark in the heart of Tempe. He was a partner and business owner of Haji Baba Restaurant for over 33 years and will be missed by all. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare February 4, 2023, as Zuhair Mahmoud Khatib Day, Lifetime of Service Appreciation in Tempe, Arizona. And the last proclamation I'd like to see is Lily Rice here. So I am going to give all the credit in the world to a couple of people for doing this along with the entire council, but first of all, from the Tempe Union High School District Governing Board, our own council member, Bridetta Hodge, and from the Tempe Elementary School District Governing Board, Ms. Monica Trejo, who's also there at the back. They contacted me, and we're talking about you, and we all know how incredible you are. They said, "We have got to do something to honor Lily Rice at our next council meeting." And so we got together and tried to do something very quickly to make sure that we honored everything you have done on behalf of the city of Tempe and for our library and all of our young people here in the community. So we're honored to have you here, and just really appreciate you joining us. Here we go. Come on down. Monica, you've got to come too.
Come on, Monica.
So the proclamation reads, whereas the importance of public libraries and librarians plays a significant role in our local communities, support our city resources and education. And whereas Lily Rice has worked at the Tempe Public Library since 1995, and has helped create a welcoming and inclusive environment for all Tempeans, including those with differences. And whereas in 2000, the family and friends of Caitlin Benson established, with the city of Tempe Public Library, a collection of books for young readers to honor diversity and those with differences and exceptionalities. And whereas Caitlin Benson was born on November 1, 1990, to Tracy and Mark Benson, and loved to visit that library. She only lived for nine and a half years, but in that short amount of time, she changed many hearts with her joyful spirit and determination. And I want to also say too, thank you to Tracy Benson, who was also very much a part of this as well. I want to make sure I pointed that out. Whereas Lily has been committed to celebrating those with differences and expanding the Caitlin Benson Collection, which now includes nearly 400 books. And whereas the city of Tempe extends its gratitude to Lily Rice in honor of her retirement on March 24, 2023, and the many contributions to our city and individuals like Caitlin Benson, who have felt welcomed and included in our public library throughout the years. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare March 24, 2023, as Lily Rice Day in Tempe, Arizona. And the next item, and the last item I have under my announcements, is 5A3, which are reappointments and new appointments to City of Tempe Historic Preservation Commission. I want to congratulate Redline Williams and Kyle Woodson on their reappointments, and Anders Enos, Jean Robinson, and Erin Davis on their new appointments to the City of Tempe Historic Preservation Commission. Congratulations, and thank you so much for serving your city. Next up, item 5B, city managers' reports and announcements. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, no items tonight.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Arvind is stealing my stuff. I love it. Item number six is public appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any jurisdiction, on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. Public appearances shall be limited to an aggregate total of 60 minutes. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while addressing the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. Just wanted to make one quick note before I go to the first item. One of the things that we did during the course of COVID was because people were not able to attend meetings the same way obviously that they once were, we started accepting public comments not only in person, but obviously over our WebEx platform, and we were also reading comments into the record. The practice of reading comments into the record is something that we are no longer going to do after this evening. We actually have said, the council had set that policy several months back, but we had frankly not communicated this to the public, but we wanted to make sure that people know. But that means people still can come and contribute here in person, or frankly, they can do some from their office or from home through the Cisco WebEx platform. It doesn't mean you can't participate, it just means you will have to participate either in person or virtually. But for the people who got their cards in this evening and requested that a couple of things be read, there were two of them. We're going to read those just because simply they were not aware of that, and we want to make sure that we honor what they wanted to have the public hear. So with that said, I'm going to go to the first item here, first person, which is David Sokolowski. And I think he is virtual this evening.
Thank you. I'm calling from Wisconsin, so I very much appreciate that. My name is David Sokolowski, and I live in Tempe. At the March 2 meeting, Center's associates confirmed everything I said about Victoria Commons. We did everything we could, and we worked with staff who did everything they could to keep the zoning and the density as low as possible on both of these sites. We could have just went MU4 done, and we didn't do that. We wanted to respect the neighborhood. We're in a housing crisis. I don't think Tempe city staff should be doing backflips to build as low density as possible and still make projects pencil out. MU4 done. That sounds a lot easier than an entire year of community input for 130 units on a light rail station. Why shouldn't this project be high density? Nexa Apartments are zoned MU4, and it was approved next to a cultural resource area. A light Tempe is zoned MU4, just one mile from this location, and nobody said anything about proper planning principles. It's the same situation with Gracie's Village and Apache Central. The only difference I can see is when projects actually include affordable housing. Again, the developer clearly said, "We could have went MU4 done," and we didn't do that. Tempe has a responsibility to solve the housing crisis. Tempe is landlocked, and 60% of land is zoned for single-family neighborhoods. It's nearly impossible to build anything without encroaching on a single-family neighborhood. California has inclusionary zoning, rent caps, non-discrimination for Section 8 vouchers, tax financing, a state trust fund. California has tried everything. It's not possible to solve the housing crisis 100 units at a time. If it was possible, California would have done it. The Democratic governor of California said that a NIMBY attitude towards housing development could no longer be tolerated. Governor Newsom has also said that NIMBYism is destroying the state of California. What makes Tempe and Arizona different from California that we can follow the same policies and get a different result? Cities in Arizona can't continue to placate the NIMBYs. We need to move forward in solving the housing crisis and build 270,000 units. A recommendation was made at the Arizona Housing Supply Committee. In my own words, "Small projects are more likely to get approved if they don't anger the NIMBYs. This is fundamentally flawed advice, because we're not even keeping up with population growth and inflation. I'm asking for Tempe to act before the housing crisis spirals out of control, just like it has in many other cities and states. Housing projects directly located on a light rail station should be mixed use, mixed income, and high density. Thank you for listening."
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Tom Brown. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes, and just when it hits the yellow light, you've got 30 seconds left just to let you go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
My name is Tom Brown. I live in South Tempe on Homestead Lane. So two comments. First, I just walked diagonally across the Mill Avenue and Fifth, and it works great. I hope that pattern survives. The other comment I have is a little more serious. We know these unscheduled public appearances are not going to be conversations. So let me simply comment, and you can call me tomorrow if you wish to discuss. I know all of you to some extent, and I consider you friends no matter how you vote. We will be here together. Randy is going to be at our Little League Saturday opening in nine days. So assuming for a moment that you all run for reelection, if I ran against you and you accurately said I was unqualified, how would that work if I had my lawyer send you a cease and desist demand and essentially threaten you with litigation? That would not happen. It's not who I am, it's not who you are, and it's not Tempe. So when someone arrives from out of town, an investor who says he or she wants to be here in our town, suddenly likes our values, and suddenly wants to be part of this community, and then bullies his or her opposition with legal threats, who takes the nuclear option when it looks like he or she may not get what he or she wants, what does that hint about the future behavior that they might exhibit when they smell blood in the water? So please open your eyes, open them wide, and be aware of who and what has been invited into Tempe. This is democracy with free speech, even if you don't like what you hear. This is not Miami Beach, and it's not Las Vegas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate it. The next speaker is Jim Freedom. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Jim Freedom. I'm a former resident of Tempe. My current residence, none of any of your business. I just wanted to say a few things. Basically, you come up here to complain. I know you don't get, too many people complain, and like, I'm glad that I followed him because he was just talking about how freedom of speech is about saying stuff that even if you don't like it, but even your document that we have to sign to be able to speak is a slap in the face to the fundamental principle of freedom. I mean, we're allowed to complain, but we have to do it politely. We're not allowed to be boisterous, we're not allowed to be emotional. You know the [BLEEP] that's going on in the world? You know, I know everything in your guys' realm is okay and hunky-dory, and you're rubbing elbows with people getting paid checks to produce [BLEEP], advertise [BLEEP]. I'm getting off point.
Sir, can you keep the language, please?
Why are you interrupting me in my time? Here you go again. Exactly. Watch the language. Have I said anything that was too ridiculous?
Sir, because you're swearing this is a show that...
So what? Who cares? It's called freedom of speech. I'm supposed to have three minutes. Say whatever I want.
Sir, please, please, you have three minutes.
I'm not. Physical violence over one word that I spoke. Am I continuing to do it? Is the volume of my voice the problem? What's going on? I mean, if you guys can't handle somebody raising their voice and using a word, what are you even doing here? Is this America? What's the problem? This is the fundamental principle of freedom. Freedom of speech is at the top of the list! And here you are, threatening me with political violence, with [BLEEP], with guns! Oh, there was another bad word. I'm so sorry. That's not even one of the really bad words that you can't even find on Carlton's list of words you can't say. Ridiculous. Anyways, let me go to a point I have. Before you guys kick me out for being too boisterous, last week, one of those terrorists threatened me with a gun, threatened me with violence rather, and told me I had to move because people that I was trying to record, the police, I was trying to record the police doing something to people, and they didn't want to be recorded, so they literally moved me 200 feet back, so I could not record them, and literally even said, "It's because they don't want to be filmed." That is a constitutional violation. I know you guys pretend like the Constitution is your number one supreme law of the land, but it gets violated daily. I'm here to tell you that. I know, I hope that I'm making you guys uncomfortable, because you need to understand that everything isn't okay out there. Our rights are being violated. I know you think it's silly, I know you think we're just a bunch of YouTube complainers or whatever, but that's not what's going on. It's ridiculous what's going on out there. You support these terrorists by doing nothing about the things that they do. Nothing will happen for the guy threatening me with violence because they didn't want to be recorded. Is that 30 seconds?
I'll give you another 15 seconds.
13 seconds, okay. The reaction to cameras by police is completely irrational and ignorant. As a free human being, if I want to put myself in harm's way to record something that's happening in public, I should be allowed to. Another basic fundamental principle of freedom. It should be allowed, and you guys should be doing something to help us as free press to do that, to be allowed to do that without being harassed. That's all I got to say. I'm sorry I hurt your feelings and scared you with my scary words.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Nicholas Wood. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Mayor, members of the council, Nick Wood, 1 East Washington Street, and I represent Alex Morello. You heard Mr. Brown come up here and talk about how we sent a letter, we're trying to intimidate voters and trying to suppress public discourse. As you know, I crafted the deal on behalf of the Coyotes. I created it, I negotiated it, brought it before you, you approved it unanimously. In that deal, I have a client who's paying fair market value for the property with cash, $40 million upfront, non-refundable earnest money. We are taking on responsibility for $240 million worth of contamination that's there. That contamination today is the obligation to the city of Tempe and its residents. But we are taking on that liability and that responsibility, all of it. It's not costing the city of Tempe or any of its residents any money. Not only that, but each year, the city will be receiving $7 million in cash, plus about $13 million in cash equivalent benefits. Anyone who wants to debate any portion of this agreement with me or with my client will do it anytime, anywhere, just name the place. But when someone erects a sign, or signs, all over the city of Tempe telling the Tempe residents, "Don't vote," right, "for these three propositions. Vote no on propositions 301, 302, 303, because my client is a criminal." That's not intimidation when we send a letter telling them to stop. That is nothing more than a reprehensible, sinister attempt to lie about a man whose integrity outshines any of the people who are opposing us. Here's a man who owns casinos. He is under the regulatory control for his gaming license. If he was a criminal, right, if he was corrupt, which is what they're saying, corruption, by the way, definition includes bribery, extortion, things like that, if he was a criminal, he would lose his casinos. He owns a bank, and you've seen how regulations regarding banks have been enforced, he would lose his bank. He owns radio stations, TV stations, that's FCC control, he would lose them. This is a man whose integrity is without question, and when someone commits defamation per se by telling the residents of the city of Tempe to vote no on these propositions because my client is a criminal, we are not... because my client is a criminal, we are not going to stand by and let that go. So, if those signs don't come down immediately, the people who place them up expose themselves to significant civil liability, and we are going to press that forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. The next speaker I have is Joe Forte. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
How's everyone doing? My name is Joe Forte. I'm a resident of Tempe, and I am here to show my support of the Coyotes deal. Councilmember Keating actually once said at our Tempe leadership that there's not enough people that share with the council when they like things that you do. Most come to give opposition, so I just want to say that I'm in full support of that. Love to see this landfill get remediated, and would love the, you know, public benefits that are going to come to that. I'd love Tempe to have Taylor Swift come out here, maybe we can have, you know, Swift Pay. That'd be great. But yes, thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Mr. Forte. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Chris Ruff. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Howdy, folks. Christopher Ruff. Corey, Andrew, you guys have met me personally before. I sat down with you guys and brought some things to your attention, and it doesn't seem anything's been done, so now I'm going to start coming to your council meetings and putting everybody on blast. I'm going to come regularly and drop names until you guys do something. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, but there's a U-Visa program that's supposed to grant visas to victims of crimes that are not American citizens. Now, I haven't gotten all the information on that, but that is going to be a murky pool when I start dipping my toes in it because I don't have a filter. It's just me on YouTube. I'm not ABC, I'm not CBS, I don't have a boss. You guys better [BLEEP] do something, or I'm going to continue to make videos about it. And you keep pushing my cases through. I've been assaulted by a police officer named Anthony Nardini out on the street with a door, his car door. I've got a scar on my leg from it. There's a video on YouTube. I tried to press charges. The police department failed to contact me, failed to contact witnesses, failed to take any evidence, failed to take any statements from me, anything. Told me that it's not a crime for a police officer to strike me with a door. That same police officer just arrested me a week ago for running around him with a flashlight on. Running around him with a flashlight on. And then the same group of officers have been arresting my friends as we show up to film them, and they're using your city code delay and obstruct out of context with the Constitution arbitrarily, and it's being applied to people than it shouldn't be applied to. And you guys are going to really regret allowing your cops to do this. I'm telling you right now, it's going to come out of the coffers of the city. I'm [BLEEP] tired of being abused when I go out and exercise my rights. [BLEEP] tired of it, Corey. I told you, I'm allowed to cuss, don't interrupt me. Do not interrupt me. I'm allowed to emphasize my words with the swear word if I'm inflecting emotion on them, which is what I'm [BLEEP] doing right now.
Not according to the rules.
You guys need to be paying attention. Yes, don't violate my rights right now. You don't want to do that. You don't want to do that. I've talked to both of you. I suggest you take action on the information I gave you. I recorded the meeting, and I'm going to put the video out. You both paid very close attention, you took notes. Do something about it. The rest of you have just been notified that I informed both of them of crimes that have happened in the city of Tempe against me and other people. I said you guys should do something about it. This is a public record. Other people are going to be looking into this now. You're on notice. Have a good [BLEEP] day.
Thank you very much. The next speaker I have is Darian Barrett. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
How's it going, council? My name is Darian Barrett. You guys are all familiar with me as a resident of Tempe. I'm also a well-known organizer within Tempe. I've been filming the police going on six years, and in these six years, I filmed all over the valley and even in other states. Just recently, Tempe Police Department has grabbed the attention of hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of viewers within the last six months. Anthony Nardini, in August of 2022, assaulted my friend using the door of a police cruiser, which caused bodily injuries after putting in a complaint with John Gilton, and it was investigated by the department who employs the cop who did the assault. There is no wrongdoing found. March of this year, me and Chris witnessed a drunk driver swerving all over the road, so I decided to call 911 and report the actions of this driver, Anthony Nardini, the same officer that assaulted Chris with the police vehicle door and caused bodily injuries, responded to this call, and later arrested Chris. Just last weekend, we were filming the police search for someone in the neighborhood that Dwight Park lies within. A man approached the vehicle with a BS story, and I'm emphasizing it like that because, Corey, it seems like cuss words are upsetting you today when you have no problem with it any other time. I've sat down with just about every single person on this council row, so let's listen. A man approached the vehicle with a BS story, looking for his daughter, and asked for a ride out of the area. Police ended up approaching this man, and he refused any and all help. They let him go without further question, come to find out it was him they were looking for, and to my further knowledge, the police did not find him. They arrested one black man who matched the description of who they were looking for, and later detained a Mexican man at Priest in Manhattan, just north of the 60, because he matched the description of who they were looking for. They detained this man until your police officers can arrest two individuals that were out filming the actions of your police officers and charged him with delay and obstruct. Corey, I don't have to organize a protest. I could organize people with cameras and expose your police department. You're listening to me, right, chief? I've sat down with you and Chief Glover before. My emails are open. You've just heard everything I said. Don't sleep on it and reach out for more information because we got lots of it. There's a lot of problem officers in the department. We also have Kevin Austin Malouf, who is using his abuse of power to dox me while I'm filming on a livestream and basically put my location of residence out for anyone and everyone. I took that as a threat, and I don't want to see Kevin Austin Malouf in my neighborhood or anyone that he is affiliated with, family or friends, while he is off duty. That is a notice, Corey. That is a notice to you too, chief. Kevin Austin Malouf.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council? If so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Okay, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the agenda and move to item number seven, which is Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. The Consent Agenda this evening is listed as miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A10, awards of bids and contracts 7B1 through 7B17, and resolutions items 7C1 through 7C11, with the exception of items 7A10, 7B11, and 7C3, which were requested by council members to be pulled for separate consideration. Any item, once again, that's designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. Okay, seeing none, were there any comments received? Well, I was going to get to her in a second. As a matter of fact, is there anyone who has additional comments?
I have those two cards to read, but...
Okay, let me, I will do that. Can we do that during public appearances at the end?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Councilmember Hodge.
Yes, I would like to remove 7A1, 7A10, excuse me, 7A10, apologize, for due of conflict of interest. I've already signed the paperwork for it. It's one that's going to be out throughout my whole time.
Okay, sounds good, all right. So, so far, we have items 7A10, 7B11, and 7C3, which have been removed for separate consideration. Are there any other items that council members would like removed for separate consideration? Okay, sounds good. While hearing none, I will look to see if there is a motion by the council on items, once again, 7A1 through 7A10, 7B1 through 7B17, and 7C1 through 7C11, with items 7A10, 7B11, and 7C3 removed for separate consideration.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. Let me reset the board here. Okay, and that item passes unanimously, 7 to 0. The first item that was removed for separate consideration was item 7A10, which is to approve the recommended diversity unity grant program funding for fiscal year 2022, 2023. These funds will be distributed to the Tempe Union High School administrative offices to be used for diversity program that will be available to students at all schools in the Tempe Union High School District. This item was pulled by Councilmember Hodge. Councilmember Hodge, any other further comments? I knew you said you were going to be abstaining.
Yes, I'm going to be abstaining due to the fact that I am a Tempe Union High School governing board member.
Thank you so much. Do I have any further comments on item 7A10, or is there a motion? It's been moved by Councilmember Chin. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Hodge abstaining. The next item that was removed for separate consideration was 7B11. Sure, okay, we're going to go to a different item then. Let's go instead to item 7C3 first. 7C3 is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designate to renew the automatic aid agreement between the Phoenix Metropolitan Area Cities, Towns, Fire Districts, and governmental jurisdictions and the city of Tempe for the purpose of providing automatic aid assistance for fires and other types of emergency incidents as described under the terms of the agreement. This is an updated version of the 2017 agreement as put forth by the city of Phoenix and agreed upon by participating partners. The updated version of the agreement not only meets the region's needs of today, but also addresses the future. This was pulled by Councilmember Devaro. Councilmember?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I just want to quickly explain about the document. It's a vital document that the fire department uses throughout the region. Since 1982, between Phoenix, Glendale, and Tempe, the use of automatic aid, which means that when dispatches do come out, it is seamless that we can cross boundaries. It doesn't matter whose truck is where, it's where the closest truck is at or the closest unit is at to provide the service for whatever situation it's had. Automatic aid reduces the number of fire stations. It helps us in terms of locations. I know that we have Station 7 that just recently got built in the south part of Tempe strategically because it provides a gap in that area, but it also provides help within Mesa Chandler and within that area. That's all part of the system that we graciously utilize. It coordinates training, it has firefighters work together, it provides fire departments' units with similar capabilities, meaning that each truck within the valley is outlined and placed in the same form and the same manner. So, if I from Phoenix was to grab equipment out of a Chandler truck, I know pretty much where it's going to be on that truck. So, the automatic aid has a large advantage, and it's better than any other place in America. And the fact that our fire departments can blend together and work together is very strategic. An example is with people that don't have automatic aid in smaller counties or in various other places across the country, things do happen and firefighters do die. Things of like our hookups and our hose lines will not connect together. Our hydrants won't work with our hookups and our connections. When that happens, strategic, or when that happens, an event can cause a danger to a firefighter, a danger to an individual, and it also costs time, time to save lives. So, with automatic aid and the seamlessness of working together across the region is a benefit for not only our department, but for every department, and it's a benefit for our citizens across the region. So, I'll be approving and accepting 7C3, and I ask for approval.
Sounds good. It's been moved by Councilmember Devaro and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item passes 7 to 0. The next item is item 7B11, which is to award a professional services contract with Freely and Hanson LLC for the resilient Tempe Master Plan Project. And that's Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project is near, dear to my heart. Super excited about the resilient Tempe Master Plan coming to fruition, and I think it's going to be a great way to transform our city for the better. We've had multiple Tempe city departments collaborate on this effort, and their hard work and plans are starting to show. We will be looking at how to better manage our flooding for our flood-prone neighborhoods, i.e., North Tempe, increase shade and native vegetation, and reduce the use of water. There will be great opportunities for the public to get involved and engage with us for the plan. I look forward to having future updates or giving future updates about this great work. And I know Councilmember Chin and I sit on the Sustainability and Economic Vitality Committee, and we're very pleased at the direction this city is going in regards to that. If you want to say anything, I don't know.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, mayor. I would like to, I concur with Vice Mayor Adams. This is a great step forward in creating a sustainable and resilient city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Any other further comments by council on this item? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Chin and seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Keating absent. The next item is item 8, which is the NonConsent Agenda. All items listed on the NonConsent Agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with a disclosure form. First up, we have miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. First item is 8A1, which is to hold a public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a development and disposition agreement with Copa Health Incorporated, Newtown Commuted Development Corporation, and La Victoria Commons for the development of a mixed-use affordable housing project on four vacant lots consisting of approximately 2.6 acres located at 2320 and 2314 East Apache Boulevard in Tempe, Arizona. Council, any questions for staff on this item?
Some move.
I've got to, can you withdraw one? I just got to make sure, because it's a public hearing. I got to see if anyone is.
Oh, fine, yeah.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing portion. Council, any further comments or questions on this item? Okay, what is that? Been moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes 7 to 0. The last item under the section is 8A2, which is to award a construction manager at risk contract to Forsite Design and Construction Incorporated for the deck repairs municipal complex project located at 31 East 5th Street. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion on item 8A2? Moved by Vice Mayor Adams? Seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
That item passes 7 to 0. The next section on the NonConsent Agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for April 20, 2023. First item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt a resolution for a general plan density map amendment from medium density to medium to high density, adopted ordinance for a zoning map amendment from GID to MU4, and planned area development overlay to establish development standards, and a development plan review for a mixed-use development consisting of a new five-story residential development with 566 dwelling units, including an existing office complex comprised of four buildings and two parking structures for IDM Fountainhead located at 2750 South Priest Drive. The applicant is Barry Riddell, LLC. Want to see if there is a presentation by the applicant this evening, which is customary with our first hearing? Cassandra, good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you. I am not familiar with this one. Thank you. For your record, Mayor and Council, Cassandra Ayers, Barry Riddell, 6750 East Camelback Road. It's our pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of... It's our pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of IDM. We are here to talk to you today about an overall site of approximately 25 acres located to the southwest corner of Priest and Alameda Drive. You can see here that there are existing offices to the west and to the east, and a parking garage and residential to the north. The existing buildings were constructed in approximately the 1980s. You can see here an aerial from approximately 2,000 from the county's convenient aerial maps. It was developed originally as an office complex, and it has become dated. So this is an opportunity to re-energize that site and bring some much-needed residential, diversity of residential to this area. IDM was founded in 1993, and since that time, they have developed dozens of high-quality multifamily projects in Washington, Oregon, and Arizona's metropolitan areas. You can see here at the bottom of the slide, two of the representative samples of some of the projects that IDM has developed here in the valley. On the left, Queen Creek, and on the right, in Glendale. So we're bringing four requests to you for your consideration. The first is a general plan amendment to the projected density map from medium density to medium-high density. The second is a rezoning of the site, the entire site, from GID to mixed-use high-density MU4. The third is a PAD overlay in order to construct those development standards as a result of the mixed-use development. And the fourth is the major, excuse me, major development plan review for the approval of the mixed-use development for those 566 multifamily units. So you can see here the general plan land use map designations, and you can see that the site, the overall site, is actually bifurcated by two separate designation categories. So our proposal would actually bring that land use category down to the south and make a single cohesive land use designation for the entire site, which is consistent with the general plan designations in this area and on this site. The proposed zoning amendment is seeking to change the zoning from GID to MU4, and the proposed use of the site will be a mixed-use development with multifamily. And I'll show you a better slide of that here in just a second. But the multifamily would be over on the eastern side of the overall site. So here's the overall site plan, I promised you. You can see it's flipped the wrong direction, but, for purposes of space. But you can see that the existing office complex is over on the west side, and then the proposed multifamily units will go over on the east side of the overall site. And that multifamily is designed to work in conjunction and harmony with the existing offices, which will remain. So the proposed site plan, and this is focusing on the multifamily component of it, since the offices will remain. The multifamily site is approximately 8.24 acres. We are proposing 566 for rent units in a variety of unit types. We are proposing 64 feet in height on the multifamily buildings, although 70 would be allowed under the PAD. And the density for the overall site is 23 dwelling units per acre. Ample parking is being provided, I'll focus on that here on the next slide, with six structures, excuse me, a couple of slides here, with six levels of parking. We are proposing a variety of amenities together with the multifamily development, the community clubhouse, a fitness center, the pools, spas, outdoor living areas that have been activated with the Ramadas, the open space courtyards, outdoor kitchens and barbecues, and then open seating with landscaping for shade, as well as conference room and some co-work space. So the parking, we are providing ample parking. It's six stories of parking garage podium style with five internal floors and one rooftop parking area that will have canopies for shade. We are providing over 1,000 spaces for the residents and guests of this community. More than 500 bicycle parking spaces, as well as EV charging stations that will be interspersed throughout each floor of the parking structure. You can see here some renderings of the.
Really, really quick, sorry to interrupt. Actually, Vice Mayor Adams has a question.
Oh, sorry, I'm just blowing right out.
No, no, no.
You're doing great. I'm a 10 EV parking, is that for the entire project? Or is it 10 on each floor?
It's 10 for the entire project interspersed throughout each floor.
Okay, and you're going, is, are you gonna have EV ready? If you need it, built into the building?
That I don't know, but I can find out, and I will get back to you.
Because honestly, 10, 10 for that larger space is not enough. So that's just something that we're really pushing for, and it's just not enough. So if you can just go back to whoever you need to go back to.
Absolutely, we'll be back to you with that feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So we have here some renderings of the different unit types, the studio and the one-bedroom. As you can see, I was talking about those outdoor areas that have been activated. Each one will have a balcony. You can see here, we asked that our client put together some renderings that would show how you could actually use those spaces. Here's an example of a two-bedroom unit, also with a balcony. And we've also provided some renderings for your information. And we did receive, I'm sure you already know, but I'll, I'll say it anyway. We did reserve, or excuse me, we did receive DRC approval for this project on Tuesday. Also provided a sample of the materials that would be used in connection with this development. And with that, I will conclude and take any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hodge.
Well, I was gonna ask a question. I was expecting Vice Mayor to ask me, is it, is it, do we have a dog park area in there? Is it any place for it? Because right around in that area, I think we have Peterson Park, but there's no dog park near there, so. Okay.
Any question I don't have to answer?
It's my understanding that they're working on getting a dog park ready for it. It's just they're looking at another property right next to it to obtain, for a dog park.
You answered, okay.
Yeah, I was already on it.
I was wondering, I was like, and you didn't ask that question.
That's why I did it, for once.
I agree.
Thanks for watching my back.
Alright, got you. And also with energy, is it gonna be, the material you're using, is it gonna be like more sustainable for, for like panels, solar panels? Anything solar to help out with energy cost?
I, I'm not aware of that, but I will add that to the list of items that we do need to follow up with you on.
Alright, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. And then the council members, Councilmember Garland.
Thank you. I agree with Vice Mayor about the EV parking. 10 spaces out of 1,000 is pretty small. So I would hope to see that number grow up significantly because we, we want to see EV charging stations because we wanna see people using that facility or that type of facility. So I would like to see that also. But what, you know, we just did a housing study and affordable housing. We are really far short in affordable housing. That doesn't look like this is going to be affordable housing. There's 566 units here. What type of housing, what rents are you gonna be charging in those?
I think it's a little premature to say what type of rents they will be. My understanding is they will be a market rent development.
Okay. So you'll be premature as in the next time you come before, she'll have that number?
Actually, I will absolutely add that to the list of items we will follow up with you on.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland, Vice Mayor Adams, and Councilmember Hodge.
Yes, are you planning to contribute to the hometown for all?
My understanding is they are in discussions to make that contribution, yes.
That was my understanding too, thank you for clarification.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams, Councilmember Hodge.
Okay, so she took, you took that answer, that was one of my questions. And is there any possibility that we can, is, I know it's market rates, but is there any way that we can add in anything affordable in there? So it can be like more than just market? If we can have a certain amount of units that are affordable or workforce in there? Just ask that question, you know, bring it back to them and say, is there any possible way that we could have multi? Like, you know, most of it's market, but we can have some affordable and some workforce in there.
I will certainly follow up with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hodge. Anyone else, further comments or questions? Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. I know this is only the first hearing, so there won't be any kind of vote taken this evening. So thank you so much for the presentation, appreciate it. Alright, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Speakers have up to three minutes to address the council. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Council, any further comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for April 20th, 2023. The last item under the section is 8B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for an amended planned area development overlay to modify the previously approved site plan and a development plan review for two new drive-through restaurants totaling 6,022 square feet of commercial use on 2.13 acres for Krispy Kreme Al Pollo Loco located at 1530 West Baseline Road. The applicant is Luceran Capello Architects Incorporated. Is there any presentation by the applicant here? I see someone, come on up. Sounds like Councilmember Devaro is already expressing a lot of support here from, to my left. Was it the Krispy Kreme or the Al Pollo Loco that you responded to? Which, which one was, was it both? The Krispy, it was the hot light, that's what it was. I see what's going on. I love this guy.
Alright, well, my name is JD Berryman with Luceran Capello Architects. I'm here to present the Krispy Kreme Al Pollo Loco project, representing the WKS Restaurant Group, who is the developer. Request is for development plan review and amended planned area development approval. We're at the south end of Arizona Mills. This is the 1997 master plan. We're at the south end, we're the existing, I'm sorry, we're the existing Claim Jumper site used to be. The Claim Jumper was unfortunately torn down this past summer in June. So now we have a vacant piece of land. The, this, this particular site was originally master-planned in 97, 97 for two restaurants. We're, we're proposing a similar site plan. It's not exactly the same, but it's gonna be similar. This pad's in front of, of the regional mall. It's on an arterial street. It's about a quarter mile from the interstate, and we have other commercial uses across the street. In terms of the site, here's, well, I guess this is the arrow. You can see where the Claim Jumper was. In terms of the site design, we are planning to keep the perimeter mature existing landscape and existing screen wall that's all the way around the site. And we also wanna keep the existing drive that's off of baseline, and this is also off the north Arizona Mills circle. So the circulation will stay the same, it won't be any different than what it is now. We also wanna keep the historic pedestrian access that comes down from the mall, which enters our site on the northwest corner. And there's an existing ramp there that comes into the site. We're obviously gonna modify it when we get into the site to go around the, one of the drive-throughs and down through the middle of the site. We're also gonna add two new pedestrian accesses out to the existing sidewalk out on baseline. There is an existing bus stop between this site and the hotel, which will help access to that, between the bus stop and the two restaurants. We also have cross-parking with the mall and with the adjacent hotel. In terms of the civil design, this will follow the master plan for the mall. This entire site drains from the south to the north. It basically drains to the Salt River. And it's all been master-planned, and there's some existing retention basins that we will reuse and follow the same pattern that's there now. In terms of building placement, we've got two restaurant and drive-through buildings. Krispy Kreme will be going on the west side, and Al Pollo Loco will be going on the east side. Krispy Kreme has requested two drive-throughs. The larger one would be for the normal use, and it has space for 15 cars. The second drive-through would be for high-volume times, and they'd just put a person out there who would actually take, take the orders in person. But that would only be during the high, high-volume times. We've got two-way drives around the Al Pollo, which will keep access to the entire site two-way, and that'll access for trash, fire, and police if needed. We've tried to keep as much of the existing site in the perimeter we can. Unfortunately with this, it's only on the south and the east side we keep the parking. Everything else on the inside of the retaining walls will probably be redeveloped. We have a trash for each building, which includes trash and recyclables. 80 parking spaces are required, we're gonna put in 86. One thing to note, I don't think I had on my, on my narratives that the peak hours of these building will probably be different. The Krispy Kreme is gonna be open from 5:30 to 10:00, and the Al Pollo Loco will be open from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So I think the peak, peak hours will be a little different, so not everything will be busy at the same time, which will help the flow through the site.
Quick question for you, just, you said the Krispy Kreme 5:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.? Or 5:30 a.m.?
10:00 a.m.
Did I say p.m.?
10:00 a.m., I'm sorry.
So only four and a half hours. I just wanted, I just wanted to put that out there for the council.
You know Krispy Kreme is throughout the day.
Alright, just wanted to, just checking.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Keating.
To that point, it is my opinion that it should stay open to at least the length of McDonald's breakfast, right? You're getting the, the 10:15 to 10:30 market, you know, that's, that's a big market.
Thank you, appreciate it. Keep, you can keep going.
And I really don't have much more. We've, we've done some things to mitigate traffic. We've included two carpool lanes in each site layout. We've doubled the required bike lane space, bike parking spaces above the zoning ordinance requirements. And we're also, as previously mentioned, close to a bus stop between the two sites. Landscape is gonna keep all the perimeter landscaping. We plan to match that palette of the interior. We're not gonna put any, any lawn. It's all gonna be native landscaping to match what's out there. The building designs are light-colored stucco with various shades. The Krispy Kreme's gonna be dark gray with green accents. Some, we worked with staff to make some changes on these. The original design had a lot more dark gray in it, so we've lessened that amount and increased the lighter colors. And brought in, they had exterior roof access and also an exterior SES on both buildings, and we brought the both of those on the inside for both buildings. All the mechanical units are gonna be screened. And that's really about all we have. It's a pretty, pretty straightforward restaurant project for us, so.
Thank you so much for the presentation, Councilmember Devaro, then Councilmember Garland.
Yeah, two questions. First, on landscape, do, do you have to, you said on the perimeter, doesn't it need to match the mall or whatever the mall's criteria is in, in kinda coordinating with their landscape, or how does that work?
In terms of maintenance?
Not the maintenance, the palette of what you're using. You said there's gonna be no grass, or, I don't know if it's still grass out there or not, but.
There's no grass out there now. There's retention on the north side and the south side. The south side, I think, takes some of the street. But it's all palaverdies and mesquites. It's all, and they're all big and, big and mature now. They really need to be trimmed up, so we're gonna have to add a few to add some shade. For staff request, add some shade for the two buildings.
And where I'm going with that is just, is just the consistency of the landscape throughout the development. It's, it starts to break up into pieces when you have different landscape than, than the other areas within that area. So palaverdies are within that area, so to speak, and it's just kinda just matching what you're seeing within that area, just to add to the complex, that's what I was hoping you guys were doing. So that was my first question. And then the second question, is this the first hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so you have time to bring donuts for the, for the second hearing, and hats for everybody. And we'll see how the vote goes, you know? I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I didn't say that, don't record that.
Too late. Councilmember Garland.
I was gonna say, I, I also something about the plants. I like the native plants. I like how you said you were gonna be putting in the native plants. But I also just like that, that you're rejuvenating that area and something else is coming back in there, and so I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to, to see this, but you really had me at Krispy Kreme.
Sounds good, thank you, Councilmember Garland, Councilmember Hodge.
You know, that's exactly what I was gonna say. You didn't even have to do the presentation. When you said Krispy Kreme, you could've walked away, and we would've said, okay, let's go for the second hearing.
And Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. If you can do anything to get us a Fazoli's, that, that would be fantastic. So, alright, thank you. So, all right, thank you. Make sure it's open past 10:00 a.m. now, please.
I'll bring that up.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. All good? Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All right. Now for the public hearing portion, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Speakers have up to three minutes to address the council. If you'd like to speak on this, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilmembers, any final comments or discussion? Hearing none. The second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for April 20th, 2023. Next up, we have item 8C, ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption. These items were read and introduced back on March 2nd, 2023, and votes on these items will be taken tonight. The first item of the section is 8C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing a general plan land use map amendment from residential to mixed use and general plan density map amendments from medium density and cultural resource area to high density and from cultural resource area to medium to high density and adopt an ordinance for zoning map amendments from CSS TOD and R16 to MU4 TOD PAD and from R16 to R1PAD and a new planned area development overlay to establish development standards for La Victoria Commons located at 2320 East Apache Boulevard for a new affordable 19-unit single-family residential and 104-unit mixed-use development with ground floor commercial uses along Apache, East Apache Boulevard. The applicant is Sender Associates Chartered. First of all, I want to make a note too here, this is going to require two votes and the resolution authorizing the general plan amendments requires at least a two-thirds city council majority vote, which is five out of seven of the council members for approval this evening. Let's see, I see Ms. Sender there and Norm. I know you gave a full presentation during the first hearing. Anything else you wish to add today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. No, Darren Sender, Sender Associates Tempe. No, if, unless you have some questions, we'll just forego the presentation again.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, it's, it's been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Just wanted to say one quick thing before we vote here. Just really appreciate the work of, you know, Norm, I remember meeting you several years ago at Rula Bula, back in the day before this project was even being talked about, before this land was even available. And I know that Copa Health was very interested in Tempe even back then. This is probably, probably four or five years ago at this point, quite candidly. So just to see where you're at now with this project and obviously, you know, working with Darren, having a great partner as well in Newtown Community Development Corporation, the notion of getting 104 affordable for rent apartments and 19 affordable for sale units is exactly the kind of development we want in Tempe. It's affordable for people in our community who truly need that kind of support right now. And it's also a mixed, it's a mixed income project, but it also covers the for sale and for rent categories. And so I really appreciate this. This is a huge coup for the city of Tempe and I'm so excited that you're here and I can't wait to see this come to fruition.
Yeah, the sting of losing Rula Bula is being mitigated a little bit by Krispy Kreme.
Yeah. I, I was trying to, you know, hearken to that day of Rula Bula and I feel like I ripped off a Band-Aid for both of us here, so.
Yes.
Great. All right. So it's been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously, seven to zero. That is, and this item, actually, I should have said too, and I apologize for this, and I'm looking at, I'm looking at my city attorney here, that first vote was on the general plan land use map amendment and general plan density map amendments. So we did have a seven out of seven vote on that, so that does clear the five out of seven hurdle. The second vote on this project, though, is for the zoning map amendments and new planned area development overlay. So is there a motion for that?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Councilmember Keating. This just requires a simple majority. Please vote.
Aye.
And that also passes unanimously, seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a sewer line easement located north on Fifth Street and west of Farmer Avenue. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
Won't you approve?
I think it's been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a water line easement located on the north side of Apache Boulevard, east of McClintock Drive. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. Madam City Attorney, I want to see if I can just move something around really quickly if that's okay in the agenda. I want to see if I can just take item 10 first public appearances before we get into current events and council announcements. Is that okay?
You certainly can.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much. First of all, I've got a couple of cards that need to be read, but I'm just going to see first and foremost, is there anyone here in the audience this evening who would like to address the council? And if so, please come forward and state your name and place of residence. Okay, seeing none, I know Kara, our city clerk, has a couple of cards that she needs to read into the record, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to her.
Yes, thank you. The first one was from Gail Shanks, Tempe resident, requesting that it be read into the record this evening. Her topic is allowing residents to take sides on the Prop 301, 302, 303 vote. This has been referred to the voters and we have every right to discuss our First Amendment rights guarantee freedom of speech. And her comments are as follows. The city council has referred the decision about whether the RFP should be awarded to Bluebird Development or not, and a vote will be taken, which will decide the outcome of this proposal. I have never in my 50 years of residence in Tempe felt like there was a more contentious issue facing me as a resident. Emotions are running high. Both sides are doing everything they can to reach voters and tell their side of the story as they believe it to be true. There have been threats recently from the developers about defamation of character when calling out the owner of the Coyotes and the serious financial issues surrounding his team, his banks, and his operations. Those issues have been considered and evaluated by the council and the information about them given to the residents prior to moving this project forward. That they have it and are now coming to light is a good thing for everyone. Do not, please, do anything to restrict all of the information that is being shared as this will enable us all to make the best decision for the city. And that concludes her remarks. And the second comments are from Ron Pies. And he said that he wasn't able to attend tonight's meeting and to please read his comments into the record tonight. As you know, I have publicly opposed this project from day one. Each day, something happens that strengthens my resolve. I do not understand why the mayor and city council voted unanimously to hold a special election, yet the city has not held one public information meeting. A well-organized volunteer citizens committee has spent their money and held public information meetings. The developer is spending millions on a PR campaign in which he discharges these citizens. He even sends a cease and desist letter to intimidate your citizens. Everything they are publicizing is true. I like the way they play the race card. This has nothing to do with Morella and his race as the imply. Also, in their website, they say the following. Tempe First Member Lauren QB's opposition to the project is also hypercritical, given her previous vote as a council member. In 2021, then-council member QB voted in favor of an agreement between the city of Tempe and the Los Angeles Angels that gave $40.9 million for renovations for Tempe Diablo Stadium. This is idiotic. Diablo is owned and operated by the city of Tempe. The Angels, owned by Hispanic Inc., sent it only use the facilities for six weeks a year. The improvements benefit the citizens of Tempe, not just the Angels owned by Hispanic. Please be fair in your involvement in this project. It is becoming very obvious that the RFP was tailored for one bidder. It is also becoming apparent that the council is favoring Alex Morella rather than letting the citizens decide the selection. As you know, I love the city. I came here in 1961 and spent most of my career in Tempe. I have never opposed anything that the mayor, mayors and council members have proposed. This is different. I sincerely hope that you do what's right. Let us, let the citizens speak and let us vote. That concludes his comments.
Thank you so much, Kara. All right, that moves us to item number nine. Current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I will call upon council members for their comments. And this evening, the first person up is Councilmember Keating.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I don't have any announcements other than just to say Happy St. Patrick's Day to, we're all Irish tomorrow, right? So Happy St. Patrick's Day to all citizens of Tempe. Also, a happy 50th birthday to my older brother, Pat.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Next up is Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things. Stay with me. I don't know if I got a slide here. Do we?
Sorry. I have a call saved.
Good. So tomorrow, we're going to have our next Human Services, Crime, or Crime Safety meeting virtually and in person here at City Hall's chamber. I just want to announce that we'll be talking about our park ranger program and also, where's my agenda? What else am I talking about?
Human services and community safety, and you're going to talk about tobacco ordinance?
Oh, no, no, that's your other one. Anyways, virtually, you can, you can sign in tomorrow at noon here or come in person here at the chambers. Next one. Proposed tobacco ordinance, public meeting will be Monday, the 20th, at noon, virtually at Tempe and/or in person at Tempe Public Library, and that will be also at 6:00 p.m. So either noon virtually or Tempe Public Library at 6:00 p.m., the tobacco ordinance will be discussed. It's your opportunity to weigh in and listen to the conversation as we go forward with this information. Next. This last couple, March 7th, actually, and two, on a couple of weeks back, we had a wastewater committee meeting with a bunch of utilities from a variety of different places within the valley and also across the country. It was a great place to showcase what we've been doing with wastewater studies and what our advantages, advantages have been in the COVID crisis and also with fentanyl and, and trying to locate and, and discover where our higher concentrations of those things are happening. So it was a great meeting, great turnout. We had a lot of people over there at the Tempe Public Library and they took advantage of the information from our staff and it was just a great forum for us to showcase what we've been doing and all the stuff that was going on. I also like to say the CDC has, has been awarding us money to continue that study. So it's something that not only just locally, but on a national level and on a worldwide level, this is being broadcast and showcased. So it's a pretty impressive where we're at as a city. Next, the Aloha Festival. It was great turnout. I know that Councilman McGarland and Councilmember Hodge were there with me. I have to say, if you haven't been there, it was actually my second time there, but the vibe and the entertainment and I have to say the crowd and the merchandise was by far the best. And then you coincide that with on Second Sundays, man, I tell you what, that Mill Avenue and that town, and that downtown lake was just bustling for sure. And the turnout, the food was great. The Hawaiian food, the Polynesian food, all that stuff. I bought myself a couple of rings. I had a couple of hats. I don't know if I was there, but anyways, it, they definitely got my money. So it was a great turnout. I appreciate what they do over there. A lot of volunteers to make that thing happen. So great job on the Aloha Festival. It was on a hiatus for about two years due to COVID, so it did come back in full force. So great job to everyone out there. Corbel Park, we had a little coffee talk, a little small turnout. I have to tell you what, though, the, the donuts from Parler were a big hit. I don't know if you can see that picture, but I'm telling you what, Krispy Kremes, you better watch out, man, because these things are loaded. You can have all your things down from Rice Krispy Treats to Hurt the Roof of Your Mouth with Captain Crunch. All the good stuff is there. Great discussion on the turnout. We talked about development. We talked about Coyotes. We had some people over there also in the park, you know, just enjoying the amenities of the park. Great feedback, just what we're doing within our parks and what it's doing for our community. And you could actually see the vibrancy of that park. I actually lived two houses down from there back in the day and I'm so proud to see what that park has been doing and, and all that we have done for it. And, is that it? And then I just also want to say thank you to our Tempe police officers. I do support you. I do protect you and I appreciate what you guys do out there. You got my support.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Next up, Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I too agree with Councilmember Navarro about having, you're back with the police department and we're sorry for everything that you go through and thank you for serving us and our country. I have a couple announcements. There's a neighborhood celebration that's going on at Kiwanis on Saturday morning. We're going to have live music and we're going to have leaders from the small business community and nonprofit organizations that you can do Q and A with. And so come out and enjoy breakfast from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. So it's right after St. Patty's Day, so I think that's a good way to start your Saturday. Second is we have Mill Avenue. We're sprucing up the medians and in our downtown Tempe and we're having native plants and green stormwater infrastructure and new lighting. So we're going to really make it pop down here and make it look nice and have good entrances to our community. So I'm excited about that. I also want to thank Joe Forte today, I'm of the Tempe Leadership Class of 38. Congratulations. He shadowed me today and it was such a pleasure to spend the day with you, Joe, and learn from one another. So thank you so much and thanks for lunch. And finally, I'd like to wish my father a happy birthday. He'll be 91 years old next week. So happy birthday, Dad.
Wow, that's awesome. Next up, Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have 27 little announcements tonight. The madness of March. I just want to show that a little bit. Just one item, this Saturday, March 25th, or coming up next Saturday, you've seen many stories in the news about the water issues and the future of water in Arizona. Our own Tempe's water conservation team will be holding a workshop on the 25th at the Tempe Public Library from 11:00 to 12:30 p.m. If anyone is interested in learning more about what Tempe is doing with our water resources and how we've been smart about water conservation, please join us and stop by and ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
I do not have a slide, but I also want to say thank you to Mike Johnson with the Class of 38, again, Tempe Leadership. Thank you so much for giving me the honor of you shadowing me today. So I really enjoyed being a part of that with you. I also want to say thank you to Jason Wolf. For you youngsters, this is called a VHS tape right here. This is what you kids use now, but this is a VHS tape. There's a really incredible video on here and I could not figure out how to get it transferred and Jason helped me, so I just want to give a shout to Jason. Thank you so much. I mean, literally, I walked in here today and I do, just about made me cry that you were able to figure out how to help me. So thank you. So I want to say that, but I want to end it by saying on Monday, my husband and I are celebrating our 30th wedding anniversary, so of, you know, the few dozen people that watch our, our city council meetings, my husband is always one of them. So I just want to say Scott Garland, I love you more.
Oh.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, Councilmember Hodge.
Okay, on March 22nd, we have Geek's Night Out, which is going to be awesome and cool because not only will we have science and technology, we'll have my Tempe Union High School students out there. So I am ready to come out and enjoy that time with them on March 22nd. We also have Fighting with Fentanyl Together, that our very own Councilmember Navarro will be hosting at one of, at my high school, at McClintock High School on the 21st, and that's at 6:00 p.m. So anybody who's interested, please come out and just get some information because this, this epidemic is not just affecting some, it's affecting all. So the more people get involved, the more people here, the more we can help. We also had the Art VI reception at the Tempe Senate Arts. It was a cool picture.[1754.11] The, uh, Councilmember Garland, she did a great job of, um, giving some beautiful remarks to my, um, six high schools, uh, my six different schools in the district, and it was, um, the artwork is phenomenal, and we are working with the city of Tempe now to make sure that our, our high school students are encompassed in doing more artwork when we do projects and stuff during this, throughout the city. And I, I, Council, Councilmember Navarro already went over it, but, you know, happy, uh, it was a great festival. I actually, last year, I was in Hawaii for it, so it was exciting to be here this time to see it, so, um, I've seen it in both places. I've seen it in Hawaii, I've seen it here. We do a great job here, too. Thank you. Um, and I want to congratulate all the receptions. They had a award for the Chamber of Congress, what are red, white, and blue awards, um, so I just want to give all, uh, congratulations out to that. Um, and my last thing I want to say is to, also to our police department, is that we do appreciate you, and I know you have our back, so we definitely have yours, too. So thank you so much for everything that you do. Everybody have a happy and safe, uh, St. Patty's Day, and if you are not wearing green, be